This meeting is being recorded. For the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for April 20th, 2020, we're being recorded. I'd like the minutes to show that all of our councilors are here and various members of staff. And thank you to all of the members of public who are joining us tonight. This is a virtual meeting. The members of the public have been muted at this time. When it is time for citizens comment on agenda items, the staff will unmute you. And I will ask for citizens who wish to comment, this is for comment on any agenda items. So we have an agenda item on Excel Energy, on Sustainable Wheat Ridge, and on the Business Stabilization Program update. So the first order of business that we address is our citizens' comment on agenda items. I will ask the staff now to open up all of the members of the public microphones. And we will we will have citizen comment on agenda items, three minutes per item. And when I recognize you to speak, if you would give us your first name, your last name, and please spell your last name and give us your address for the record, then you will have three minutes. Do I have citizens on the phone who would like to speak? And if you would, please ask to speak and I will recognize you. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak on any of the agenda items? Now is the opportunity to speak. If you would like to, please say something and I will recognize you.
Mayor, we do have someone named Caitlin with her hand up.
Okay, Caitlin, would you please join our meeting? Give us your first name, your last name, your address, and then you have three minutes to speak. So please continue.
Can you all hear me?
Yes, I can.
My name is Caitlin Wedgwood. I am actually not a resident of Wheat Ridge. My family is, however. I would like some more information on the Business Stabilization Program. I am a bookkeeper and I have a client who has a business in Wheat Ridge off of 44th and Harlan. Spoken with a number of council people today regarding this issue. I would like to, I guess, get more information on how the $5,000 grant has been decided. And I understand that one of the big deciding factors was the business license being current. I would like to know if there is any way to have that, I guess, like special circumstances, be able to bypass that particular issue. The client in question is Cypher Automotive. They've been in Wheat Ridge for 59 years. They do pay and file their sales tax in a timely manner. It just so happened that this year, their business license was missed. He has since paid it as of March 9th, $70 fee because of a little $50 late fee. Yet he was still denied for the $5,000 grant. And I would just like to know, I guess, if you guys are considering or if the committee that was put in charge of this is considering any sort of extenuating circumstances in a situation like this.
Thank you, Ms. Wedgwood. That will come up during our elected official reports under the Business Stabilization Plan. So they may address that at that time.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there any other, any other public citizens out there who would like to comment on any agenda items? Please ask to speak and I will recognize you and you may speak. Once again, any members of our public out there who would like to, who would like to comment on agenda items? Now is the opportunity. Okay, I don't hear any more citizens' comments to take. So we will close that portion of our meeting. We will go to our first, our first item is Excel Energy: Building a Clean Energy Future. And we have Preston Gibson with Excel. Mr. Goff, do we have any opening for Mr. Gibson?
I think that's about it, Mr. Mayor. I was just going to introduce Preston. He is the Excel Energies Area Manager for Community and Local Government Affairs. And he is here tonight to give us an update on their building a clean energy future, which is their effort to reduce carbon emissions. He was, came to City Council, I can't remember exactly when, a year or so ago, and gave an update and this is a follow-up to that.
Okay, Mr. Gibson.
Thank you, thank you for your time this evening. I really appreciate it. I know you've got a lot on your minds, much more than just simply energy in these difficult times. So I appreciate your time. I wanted to begin by talking just before I give the presentation, a little bit about what Excel Energy is doing relative to the COVID-19 issues we're all dealing with. We're all being very careful in terms of following the necessary social protocols. Many of us are working from home. I've been working from home. This is my sixth week now. But those employees that have to work in the field are maintaining social distancing. They've changed different procedures so they can maintain that. And quite frankly, the safety of our employees as well as the public and our customers is our top priority. We're going to talk about some environmental priorities here with this presentation, but none of it happens if we're not safe, we're not keeping our employees safe and our community safe. So I wanted to, just at the outset, to recognize, recognize you for what you're doing as well as our company for the practices that we have to keep our employees and our community safe. With that, I, hopefully, this, this works smoothly. I'll run through this presentation quickly, but wanted to start by, by making those few remarks. Okay, let's see, is this going to work? Okay, great. Excel Energy, of course, you probably are aware that we serve eight states. We serve the upper Midwest as well as Colorado, New Mexico, and Texas. 3.6 million electricity customers, 2 million natural gas customers, about a million and a half electricity customers here in Colorado, as well as about a million and a half natural gas customers here in Colorado. We've been a national leader in wind energy since 2005, more than a decade. We're typically number one in the country in terms of the wind energy that we have on our system. We have also, since the early 1990s, supported energy efficiency and offer a leading portfolio of programs. We have led the industry in voluntary emissions reductions and many other things that we'll, we'll run through here as we go through the presentation. And these are our priorities. Certainly, keeping bills low is important to us, but enhancing the customer experience and leading the clean energy transition. That's something that's been critically important to us for the last number of years. And I've got quite a lot of information on this. But again, none of this happens unless we're keeping our, our employees, our customers, and our community safe, which really is, overlies all of what we do as a, as a company. So leading the clean energy transition, I think I mentioned this when I was out last year because just a little while earlier than last year, our CEO came out from Minneapolis and made a big announcement, a big announcement that our company was going to be 100% carbon free by 2050. A great vision, the first in the country electric company to make that commitment. And it's been followed now by a number of others. We led the way and others said, well, if Excel Energy can lead the way, we think we clearly can do that as well. Just since 2005, we've reduced carbon emissions by 44%. That's kind of remarkable. I mean, I, I've been following that, I've been with the company since 2010, and just 10 years goes by in the blink of an eye and we've done, done that much reduction. And the interesting thing, just from 2018 to 2019, we had more than a 10% decline in emissions based on what we've been doing as a company, which is our largest decline that we've, quite frankly, ever had. By 2030, our goal is to reduce carbon emissions by 80%. Our previous goal by 2030 was 60%, so we're making a lot of headway in that direction. Grounded in science, this looks like a complex graph, but it's not so much so. If you take a look at the left bar, you can see the amount of percent carbon emissions reductions. And then, of course, you can see what we've achieved on the bar at the bottom. You know, quite frankly, we have met and exceeded the Paris Agreement targets. Even though our country has not gone that way, we've not signed on as a country, but we certainly met those, those, those targets. So if you, if you look at, just take, for example, to go out to 2030, you can see that, that's the, that's the range from about, it looks like about 25% or so, down to an 80% reduction. Anywhere in that range would meet those, meet those temperature reductions to align with the Paris Agreement. Well, you can see we're, we're the very, it's almost reversed, but we're the very bottom, which means we're very, at the very top of being very clean in, in terms of carbon emissions. So we're clearly leading the way in that, in that regard. I think I mentioned 44% carbon reductions by 2019. The EPA's original Clean Power Plan was 32% reduction by 2030. Clearly, we've already beat that by in 2019, so we're leading the way. Achieving our clean energy vision, reducing carbon emissions is obviously a top environmental priority that our company has and has had for a number of years. We also need to protect the reliability and affordability of our energy, energy delivery. You know, years ago, reliability and affordability were it. That's what we had to do. It's becoming an increasingly more complicated business over the years with adding renewables to the system and as well as our energy efficiency targets. And so it's no longer just reliability and affordability, although those are still very important to our company. Developing the bottom carbon-free, 24/7 dispatchable technologies, that's renewable technologies to help us get to 2050 where we're going to be carbon free, that's something that's going to be very important to us. So as we start looking at the, the path to get to 80% reduction by 2050, excuse me, by 2030, we're looking at a lot of different things, increasing renewables, natural gas and energy storage. I won't read all, all the, all the, the items on the slide, but one thing I don't think we see there, you see transitioning coal fleet. We're retiring a lot of our coal plants. I've got a slide showing how many of the ones that we've retired in Colorado, but it's pretty remarkable that we've gotten all the coal out of our immediate region here. And that's happened just over the last five, six, seven years. Kind of amazing. So the plans that support our 2030 goal in Colorado is our Colorado Energy Plan. We're already, and have been moving in this direction for several years. As part of the Colorado Energy Plan, we're going to be adding 1,100 megawatts of wind. We're already in the process of doing that. Adding 700 megawatts of solar and 275 megawatts of battery storage, which is an enormous amount of battery storage, more than any other utility company is doing in the entire country, to my knowledge. We're also retiring, we're retiring Comanche 1 and 2. Those are coal-fired power plants down in Pueblo. We're going to be doing that on a scale, I'll show you in just a second, but that's coming up very quickly. That helps us add the renewables to our system while we're taking coal off of our system. By 2026, we expect to have a carbon emission reduction of about, of about 60% as compared to 2005. So in terms of the, you know, path to 2050 aspiration, it's going to take a lot more technology than what we have today. Sometimes I like to say, we like to say that there's probably a middle school student right now who 15, 20 years from now is going to be developing that technology that we all are going to need to get us to this point of being carbon free. So we don't know what it's going to be, but stay tuned. I'm sure it's out there. But we support that as a company, we support private investment. We also, we have a bill before the legislature. Of course, the legislature is no longer in session. They are coming back, maybe they'll deal with this, but an innovative clean technology bill that will allow us to actually invest in different technologies to, to move us towards 100% carbon free. But with the current technology, we can't get there. Even with battery storage, it's not enough to help us get there because battery storage is great for daily changes, but seasonal changes and weather, when there's, we have clouds for multiple days in a row, no wind, you just, you just need different technologies. This shows some of them. On the right side, you can see some of those technologies that are, that are displayed there. The one on top is, is carbon capture and storage. The next one is deep rock geothermal. And the last one is hydraulics is turning, developing hydrogen through renewable sources. So we do need to get there. How are we going to get there? We need innovative, innovation and innovative policies. We need R&amp;D incentives, we need the right ecosystem, whether it's permitting or, you know, interconnection processes, whatever it may be. We have got to rely on scientists to help us get there, but we also clearly need an ecosystem, incentives, and standards to help us get to the point of being carbon free. This is a hydrogen demonstration project that, that we're, we're going to be working on next year. You can see it's in the upper Midwest. That's actually a nuclear facility. We have two nuclear facilities in the upper Midwest. And we're going to, going to be doing that hydrogen project at one of those two facilities. So just as we think, when we think we're, well, we're doing pretty well on electricity, all of a sudden, wait a minute, natural gas really is not something that is in the favor of those that are expecting us to move towards a carbon-free future because we're still burning. Our customers are still using natural gas to heat their homes, to heat their businesses, to cook their food for various industrial processes. And so how do we, you know, wring out the savings and emissions to the extent that we can with our natural gas system as well? And so we rely on producers and suppliers in terms of making their systems very tight, not leaking or in any way releasing natural gas into the environment when it's either mined or transported. We look at our system as well and to be sure that we are doing everything we can to have a very efficient, very tight system that's not, again, leaking any natural gas. And then also, we got to look at other ways to move towards beneficial electrification. And we moved to this slide and we'll talk just a minute about that because we're, we're moving away from gasoline. Obviously, you can see how many electric vehicles, you see more and more on the road every day. The governor wants about a million of those on the road, just in Colorado. We just passed that million mark in our entire country last year. And our governor wants to have about a million on the road in the next 10 years. Kind of amazing because, on my recollection, it's about six months ago, we had about 25,000 electric vehicles on the road in Colorado. So we've got a big goal to get to. We, as a company, are working on our transportation electrification plan. We'll be submitting that to the Public Utilities Commission next month. And a lot of it's going to have to do with fleet charging, public charging, developing infrastructure, various programs. We already have a rate structure. If, if you wanted an EVA in your home, you could separately meter that and go on a rate structure that saves you 50% of the cost of electricity to charge your vehicle in off-peak hours. So we're moving towards electric vehicle future here. And, and then you can see, reduce upstream oil and gas emissions, as I mentioned a minute ago, offer low-carbon solutions for, for homes and for businesses. I think one of the things we have to be really a little bit careful about is social equity issues. Because whenever we move from one fuel to the other, we're looking at affordability. It's more expensive, it'll be more expensive to heat a home, more likely with electricity it is today, likely will be in the future. So how do you help those people that are especially vulnerable to increased heating costs? That's something that we, we always want to take into consideration as we're moving forward. It's clean today, even cleaner in the future. You can see that, you can see how much carbon is put out by a conventional car. It's remarkable, the difference, just in 2018, it'll be less than half in 2018 to charge an electric vehicle and the emissions they put out as compared to using gasoline. But you can see, once we're, once we have renewables only at some point, there won't be any emissions coming from that electric vehicle. So the evolving energy mix is, 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 I think, pretty, pretty interesting because if you look at, and this slide, by the way, this shows, this shows all of our eight states. So that's why there's nuclear involved in the mix there. You can see nuclear is the, the third column. We don't have nuclear here in Colorado, but if you look at across the country, you can see the basic bars, the basic information as to, to where we are. Then you move to Colorado and you can see that just in, from 2005 to 2019, we've cut in half the amount of mission, emissions that we get from our coal power plants. In other words, some of it's been, we put very high-tech equipment to scrub those, those, those emissions. But in many ways, it really is a testament to our closing power plants early, those coal-fired power plants. And you can see the, the march of renewables just goes higher and higher. And that's helping us obviously get to our, to our major goal. If you look at the, the coal plant retirements in the left column, many of those were here in Colorado. Cameo was out in the Grand Junction area, Cherokee, North Denver, Cherokee 1, oh, 2, Cherokee 1. Arapahoe was in Denver, Cherokee 3, Cherokee 4, Valmont, which was up in Boulder. All of those plants have been retired over the last five, six, seven years. Kind of amazing, we've been able to do that. But we, at the same time, we've been adding renewables to backfill what we're retiring. And then 2019 to 2027 retirements, Command, you see Comanche 1 and Comanche 2 in that mix. Those are the ones that are down in Pueblo. And that's what allows us to add 1,100 megawatts of wind and 700 megawatts of solar by taking those out of the mix. We're adding solar capacity right there at that same site, putting in our, putting it on our transmission grid at, at that site where Comanche currently is located and creating some economic benefit and some, some workforce needs that are going to help Pueblo. We were very, very close with Pueblo on that. So I think all in all, it's, it's, it's working extremely well. One thing we talked about is steel for fuel, steel being the towers that we have our wind turbines on. Fuel typically is coal or natural gas, but now steel, we often say steel is used for fuel. We, we've been, we put a remarkable amount of wind energy on our system just in the last two years. Currently, we're working on wind energy. You can see on the map, Cheyenne Ridge, that Cheyenne Ridge project is 500 megawatts of wind, probably enough for in excess of 200,000 customers just with that one 500-megawatt wind facility. But all in all, we're adding 1,100 megawatts with our Colorado Energy Plan. Now, for those customers who would like to move more quickly than what we're doing in terms of adding renewables, we have a number of different programs. I won't go over those, but certainly I could if, if somebody has questions. Energy-efficient leadership. You know, we, we have a comprehensive portfolio of over 150 types of programs for different customers for energy efficiency. Sometimes we call it demand-side management. We've also, in 2018, saved enough electricity with these energy efficiency programs to avoid, avoid the necessity to build about 21 power plants across our eight-state region. So energy efficiency is something we've been focused on for a long time. The environmental benefits, in addition to reductions in carbon emissions, these are what we've achieved, 47% reduction in coal ash. You don't read all those numbers, 82% sulfur dioxide emission reduction. Keeping our customer bills low. Our bills in Colorado, our electric bills are about 33% below the national average and gas is about 19% here in Colorado below the national average. So as we've been adding renewables, we've been doing it the right way. We've been adding them where it's cost-effective. The prices have come down remarkably over the last five years, over the last few years. And that's why we've been adding them quickly as the prices have come down. And it's made it much more affordable and easier for us to add it to our system. Now, with that, what I'd like to do is just a couple of final points and then I'll close. I think my time is just about up. I wanted to say that not only are we trying to do the right thing from an environmental perspective for our communities, but we're all, we're all members of our communities, right? I mean, I sit on a number of boards here in Jefferson County and up in Adams County. Many of our employees do that. I'm not the only one. But in addition to that, we contribute to United Way, a million and a half dollars to United Way last year. And our company matches most of our donations that employees give to United Way. 1.4 million charitable donations our company made directly to various nonprofit organizations. We had 30,000 volunteer hours and just in Wheat Ridge, Family Tree, Jefferson Center for Mental Health, we did our Day of Service at those two facilities. Institute for Environmental Solutions, I actually personally worked on a project down in Clear Creek in Wheat Ridge a few years back with the Institute for Environmental Solutions. So we are, we are connected to our communities. And the final note I'd like to say is, we appreciate Wheat Ridge being part of our Partners in Energy Program. Partners in Energy is a program that we developed four or five years ago. And I think, I can't remember how many cities we've had involved in it. I think 20 or 30 cities here in Colorado. And pretty remarkable, their various goals and objectives that are developed with an energy action plan. We very, worked very closely with Mary Ann Schiller and your sustainable Wheat Ridge community. I know they're giving a presentation next. I'm, I'm not going to try to go over a lot of what they might say, but we, we've got some, some great, some things that have happened already in terms of implementing the energy action plan. There's a number of goals for next year. They have to do certainly with residential and business energy efficiency and some other things. But we just want to say thank you for that. Thank you for participating with us and Partners in Energy. We greatly appreciate that. And they've been a pretty successful program for the company generally. So with that, I want to thank you for your time this evening. And if you have any questions, I'd like to try to answer them.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gibson. Great presentation and, and thank you for the work that your, that your firm is doing to make our world more sustainable. We appreciate that. I would like to open the conversation up to questions from council. If you have a question, raise your hand and I will try to call on you. Are there any questions from council? And perhaps we'd have staff bring back the full screen. There we are. Do we have any questions? Ms. Hoppy, please.
I don't really have a question. I just want to say thank you very much to Preston for coming and giving us this presentation and for keeping us updated. I believe you were here last year and so I do enjoy seeing the updates. And I'm, I'm super excited about the changes you guys are making towards renewable and getting your emissions, carbons down. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Additional questions or comments? I had, I had a question. Now, Mr. Gibson, tell me a little bit more about power to gas. What, what's that concept?
Well, the power to gas is creating natural, is creating, creating hydrogen gas through the electrolysis process. I'm not a scientist, so I'm doing my best here. So there's an electrolysis process where you put that charge into some fluid that you're able to create natural or hydrogen gas. And, and by doing that, then you can take that gas and you can store it. And then when you need it the most, for example, when, on a, on a hot summer afternoon, you get home, you've got your air conditioner crank, you've got your stove turned on, we need to put more electricity on the system, you can use that to create electricity. You can all use it to do other things as well. So, but the great thing is you can make that gas with renewable sources. And I don't believe there's any emissions with that type of gas. So it's, it's very efficient.
Very good. Thank you so much. Any other questions that we have from council of Mr. Gibson? Well, seeing none, I want to thank you very much again for a great presentation. Nice to see you virtually and hope all is well.
Great to see you. I might hang on and listen to the next presentation by Sustainable Wheat Ridge. That's okay.
That's great. We're glad to have you stay with us because it's a great segue into our number two item on the agenda, which is Sustainable Wheat Ridge Update. Really glad to have this. I met with the Sustainable Wheat Ridge Group about, you know, it was back in the winter sometime. So it was, you know, six or eight weeks ago, so it seems like a lifetime. But they had the great plans on there and I see that we have Chair People Joy Op and Amy DePierre with us. So I want to thank you all for being here. And we've got you in the screen and I'm going to turn it over. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation or?
We do. I will turn it over to Mary Ann Schilling and our new, can't say it, Sustainability Coordinator is also here, Kayla. She kind of started right before the big COVID event happened. So, and we had a lot of employees start right before that, so they didn't get much of a honeymoon. We jumped right into COVID. But happy to have her here this evening. I'll let Mary Ann introduce the topic.
Okay, Mary Ann, please continue.
Great. Again, I'm Mary Ann Schilling, Assistant to the City Manager. I'm here tonight with the Sustainable Wheat Ridge Co-Chairs Joy Op and Amy DePierre, along with Kayla Betzel, the new Sustainability Coordinator. Tonight, they are going to be presenting a pre-recorded video from the committee. It's about 15 minutes long and then afterwards, they're going to be available for questions. for questions. So take it away.
All right. Thank you. We'll sit back and get the popcorn ready.
Jesse, over to you.
Amy, I think you might still be on mute.
It's a recording, so I shouldn't need to talk. It had sound with it when we tried it before. Yeah.
We'll, we'll just try this again.
Amy DePierre, and I'm presenting to you today with Joy Op and Kayla Betzel to provide an update on Sustainable Wheat Ridge. Thank you for your time and attention and for having us during this interesting time in history. Happy Earth Day later this week. We sincerely appreciate all that City Council is doing for our community right now. And we look forward to sharing about Sustainable Wheat Ridge with you today. We wanted to start off with a couple of slides that share a bit about our purpose and our background. First, the purpose of Sustainable Wheat Ridge is to provide our city with recommendations and engage our community around sustainability initiatives. We define sustainability as the responsible use of resources as they pertain to the three pillars of sustainability: environmental, economic, and social. The Marion City Council originally selected six topic areas of focus to help direct our efforts. These include energy efficiency and green building, transportation, solid waste and recycling, renewable energy, water, and communication and engagement. To briefly provide background for our work so far, the committee was selected and began work in June of twenty seventeen. Comprised of eleven resident volunteers with expertise in sustainability topics, we wrote a comprehensive report and recommendations that continue to guide our committee's projects as we transitioned from drafting our report in June of twenty eighteen and into implementation in January of twenty nineteen, at which time we onboarded new members and were awarded a budget to move sustainability plans forward. Before we get into the bulk of our presentation, we would like to pause a moment to say thank you to City Council for approving a part-time position for the city's first staff member dedicated exclusively to sustainability and introduced you to Kayla Betzel. Kayla?
Hi, my name is Kayla Betzel, and I started as the City of Wheat Ridge Sustainability Coordinator in February. I've been working closely with Amy, Joy, and the members of the Sustainable Wheat Ridge Committee to create and implement sustainability programs in Wheat Ridge. Separate from the committee, my main focus has been designing and implementing the Sustainable Neighborhoods Program. This program is set to begin in summer of twenty twenty, and by the end of the year, we will have two neighborhoods enrolled in the program, working towards sustainable neighborhood certification in the summer of twenty twenty-one through neighborhood-led sustainability events and projects in our community. I've been working with city staff to write and apply for grants to expand the sustainability initiatives in Wheat Ridge. In February, we applied for a grant through the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment to increase waste diversion and recycling programs and to increase my physician's funding by zero point five FTE. In April, I submitted a grant to the Candide Foundation to purchase zero-waste event supplies with the goal of transitioning the seven performances in the park and the Carnation Festival in the summer of twenty twenty to zero-waste events. By securing the equipment necessary to successfully coordinate these events, the City of Wheat Ridge will be able to transition to more internal and external zero-waste events in future years. I'm also working to expand municipal sustainability initiatives internally and working to update and prioritize the initiatives researched and laid out in the previous municipal sustainability plan. All of my efforts as Sustainability Coordinator align with the goals of Sustainable Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you, Kayla. Let's see. For the remainder of our presentation, we will highlight Sustainable Wheat Ridge's accomplishments to date and share our hopeful future plans by topic area, even in the wake of COVID nineteen. We feel our initiatives can be helpful now and as we begin to emerge from our homes. You will note that we have listed the goals from our original report on our slides. This is for ease of reference. We will not be spending time to further explain them during this presentation. Energy efficiency and green building are split into two slides. For energy efficiency, over the past year, Sustainable Wheat Ridge has been a part of the Partners in Energy Program with Excel Energy to provide subsidized energy audits for commercial and residential properties, as well as set up and begin monitoring municipal energy use. To date, fifty residences and seventy-seven businesses have participated. Going forward, we have allocated budget to provide fully subsidized multifamily energy audits and are hopeful to increase small business participation in the program. Due to current circumstances, businesses cannot be audited, so we are balancing our goals with our new reality and recognize that small businesses are currently inundated with other needs. The city is also exploring a partnership with the Colorado Energy Office and the Department of Local Affairs to explore financing assistance on renewable energy projects on city property. We hope to have more details and information at our next City Council update. While the bulk of the work under this topic area has focused on energy efficiency so far, for the green building topic, Sustainable Wheat Ridge was approached by the Community Development Department about sustainable building guidelines. A small team is beginning research on policy guidelines, ordinances, and the like to identify opportunities where the city could incorporate sustainable building guidelines into existing practices or provide checklists and fact sheets about sustainable building to residents and developers. Going forward, we will bring pertinent information and opportunities to City Council for review. Additionally, based on Wheat Ridge's agricultural history and today's identified need for robust local and regional food systems, Sustainable Wheat Ridge has identified urban agriculture as an important community issue. Sustainable Wheat Ridge attended Jeffco's CSA Day with local and regional suppliers to share information and provide support for farming and food production in Wheat Ridge and Jefferson County. Due to restrictions in place for in-person contact, we are currently working on sharing knowledge and resources through online workshops, education, and outreach as residents seek opportunities to connect on urban garden strategies. Transportation. Sustainable Wheat Ridge has met with the Radex, Wheat Ridge's Active Transportation Advisory Team, to discuss ways that we can collaborate and help amplify each other's efforts to promote bicycle ridership and active transportation. Over the next year, Sustainable Wheat Ridge will continue to reach out to advocacy groups and organizations that promote active transportation. As we work to identify specific policy, advocacy, and infrastructure needs, Sustainable Wheat Ridge has a small budget to assist with implementation of these items. Our committee is also planning to increase the number and accessibility of bike racks in the city as part of our green business programming. In addition, we have recommended that city staff attend now an online webinar-based bicycle-friendly driver course to familiarize themselves with existing and new legislation regarding cyclists and bicycle infrastructure. At this time, I'll turn the presentation over to my culture, Joy, so that she can close out our presentation. Thank you.
Hello, council. Thank you for having us. And I'll begin with solid waste and recycling. Coloradans produce almost eight pounds of trash per day, which is twice the average American. In Wheat Ridge, we would like to do our part to help residents manage waste and divert some of this waste from landfill by composting and recycling. Last year, we were able to negotiate a contract with a local composting company called Scraps. They collect compost in bulk and take it to A1 Organics, where compost is turned into a great soil amendment. With membership to Scraps, each resident receives five gallons of soil amendment for personal use. The bins were just placed at the rec center and coming soon to City Hall. We are thrilled to have this much-needed service in our community. We are using a portion of our funds to offset the cost for two months for the first one hundred residents who sign up. And residents can go to the city's website now to sign up. Sustainable Wheat Ridge would love to help the community in creating zero-waste events here in the city. We are in the process of working with the event planning teams at the Carnation Festival to see what can be done this year as we move toward this goal. Kayla discussed the grant opportunities we are seeking to help us toward this mission. Additionally, we have a small team researching policy about how waste is managed within the city. Renewable energy. The shift toward renewable energy and away from fossil fuels can happen at the local level, and the committee has this in mind as we make recommendations to the city. This shift helps us be more resilient as a community and save money in the long run. Last year, we applied for and were awarded two grants from Charge Ahead Colorado to install electric vehicle charging stations. These will be installed soon at the rec center and at City Hall. We look forward to a ribbon-cutting ceremony when this work is done. The award of these grants motivated the city to budget for the purchase of their first electric vehicles in twenty twenty. We will continue to encourage the use of electric vehicles and promote the use of new, the new local charging stations. And finally, the committee is developing a lawnmower exchange program with Regional Air Quality Council by which residents receive a voucher which helps to subsidize the cost of exchanging their gas-powered mower for an electric mower. We have allotted a portion of our budget toward this program and are hopeful to put this program in place this year. Water. Clear Creek is one of the most treasured landmarks in our community, and keeping it and all of Wheat Ridge's water bodies clean and viable is a high priority for the committee. Managing stormwater runoff and educating the community on good water management practices are also guiding factors in our work. Last year, we developed a partnership with the River Network, an organization that recruits local volunteers to conduct creek cleanup days. We had one event last year and are hopeful to have another toward the end of the summer or fall this year along Clear Creek. Hundreds of pounds of trash were removed from a small area along the creek, demonstrating just how necessary these activities are. We are grateful for the Parks and Rec Department helping to haul this trash away. Collecting rainwater is a great way for residents to conserve for outdoor gardening. And last year, we used a portion of our funds to purchase and distribute one hundred and forty-five rain barrel divergator kits. We will continue this popular program again this summer. We are also very excited about our partnership with the Saints Peter and Paul STEM School. We have a plan in place for the science curriculum to include a water testing unit. The seventh and eighth graders will have the opportunity to test several aspects of the creek to determine the viability of aquatic life and provide data to further understand the city's stormwater management system. Communication and engagement. Last year, we were able to take a bold step with the announcement of our name change to Sustainable Wheat Ridge and a fabulous branding effort. We got a new logo for our committee as well as for each of the topic areas. Right away, we were approached by the City of Edgewater and helped them get started with their own sustainability action plan, and it solidified our credibility in the broader community. We hosted a regional meeting of sustainability committees in Jefferson County and attended a tree planting at the rec center as part of the fiftieth anniversary celebrations. Upcoming community engagement plans include continuing to meet with the Jeffco Committees on a quarterly basis and offering engagement events to the Wheat Ridge community as soon as we are able. As of now, we are hopeful to be able to attend a couple of local works events this summer. Without having in-person connection, the team is continuing to submit to connections, preparing for the launch of our page on what's up Wheat Ridge and promoting the fiftieth Earth Day online. Sustainable Wheat Ridge will again present at this year's Business Awards and is developing criteria for a green business award to recognize sustainability efforts of businesses. We look forward to increased participation as local businesses make efforts to advance their sustainable practices. And most exciting is the implementation of the Sustainable Neighborhoods Program to Wheat Ridge this year, which Kayla Betzel was hired to lead and discussed earlier. This program is exciting because it addresses all the topic areas of the action plan in a fun and engaging way. We've talked about a lot of high-level ideas, and I wanted to also let you know that we have some small messages too. With the printing of the Swedish cloths, our messaging is that you can make simple but important changes in your home by using a reusable cloth to wipe counters. Thank you for your time and your commitment to building a sustainable Wheat Ridge. We're excited to work with you, and we look forward to getting to know the new council members. At this time, our team can take any questions that you might have.
Well, thank you very much, Amy and Joy and Kayla and Mary Ann for a great, great presentation and a great, a great program that we've got going on in the city. And I'm really glad to have you all join us in real, real life virtually. So questions of, of council, if you just raise your hand, I will give you a call. Ms. Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to the Sustainable Wheat Ridge Group. You guys have done such an amazing job as volunteers. And I'm glad you now have some more staff support with Mary Ann and Kayla. One thing that I did want to ask you, I heard you say something about building and, and green efforts. And one thing that came to mind is that the City of Lakewood has a construction waste management plan. And it's basically if you are building a new building or if you're doing a fix and flipper, if you're redoing your kitchen or whatever, then you have this plan where you have to recycle like this. Yes, this will be recycled. This is where it'll go. This is how much we think is going to end up in the actual landfill. And so I was just wondering if you guys were aware of that or if you've had an opportunity to look at that yet.
First of all, Denise, I wanted to say thank you for, I know Kayla's role a lot. You're a huge advocate for that. So thank you for your support and your continued support. In regards to your question, I just want to say the team, we are looking at the surrounding municipalities, and we are closely considering everything for the guidelines, including the kind of deconstruction. And we have a couple of professionals that we have been speaking with about those types of efforts. So that's a great idea. I've made a note, and we'll make sure to include that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Additional comments or questions from council? On that same topic, I will tell you that I did a project in Frisco, and we, we were required up there as part of the building permit to segregate our waste, waste materials into lumber and, and paper and, and steel and, and drywall. So we did that. So there's, there's models out there. Additional, additional questions? Ms. Dozeman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to give kudos to Sustainable Wheat Ridge. I, I think your marketing has been great, and I actually recently signed up for the compost program. And it was really accessible. It was easy to find. And I just wanted to thank you for that. And I appreciate all of your hard work, especially given that you guys are primarily volunteers. And I'm hoping that we can do a recyclable kind of event for the Carnation Festival this year. I know it might be a little bit more challenging with, with everything that's been going on. So if you guys could maybe get in touch with me and we can talk about that for August, that would be great. And then I did have a question about whether we were awarded the grant for the full-time coordinator position or if we're still waiting to hear back on that.
We will find out in mid-May if we receive the grant through the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment to fund the position. And we should be hearing this next week about the Candide Grant for Zero-Waste Event Supplies.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Ms. Weaver?
I also wanted to just say thank you and give kudos to the committee. It's been fun. Some of the unsung things that I'm, I don't think they had time to mention, but they've also just worked with a lot of community businesses. And I'm, I'm thinking about the conserve program with Circle K and just other things where, where they have shown up to really support Wheat Ridge businesses as well who have initiated in, in different sustainable efforts. And I, I just want to thank you all for really being so broad. And I, I'm just amazed at how much stuff you actually get done and, and the, you're able to do so many broad things. So, so nice job on just how you've organized and gone forward and done so much in, in relatively little time that you've been going. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from staff, from my council? Ms. Saltine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to echo everyone's appreciation for the work that this committee's done in the last almost three years. I, every time I've had a chance to interact with you guys in different capacities, I'm just like astonished at the, the skill level that you guys collectively have. Like you're, you're like having NASA of sustainability in our community, and we're all better for it. So, so not only are you putting in, in a lot of time and making a difference, but like I'm just astonished at the insight and skills you guys bring. So, and Kayla, it's nice to meet you. It'll be nice to meet you in person at some point, hopefully. A couple of things. First of all, I, I have my, my water barrel kit that you guys gave out last year. And actually, COVID-19 gave me the chance to actually finally put it together and put it to use. So, I know you've handed a lot of those out, and as I did, I just had an appreciation that I felt like this is just a core part of who we are as a community. And I just really appreciate that a lot. A couple of other things. You know, one thing that really stood out in the presentation, and Amanda just alluded to it, is your, your willingness to partner with, with anybody in the community. The, the range of partnerships that were in your presentation was just astonishing. And I think it really shows that you're touching a lot of different aspects of our civic life in a lot of different ways. And, and I think those partnerships are key to really leveraging what we have. I'm looking forward to what you guys do in the next year. And I would actually personally like to challenge my peers on city council to really try and cut back our use of the water bottles that we consume on Monday nights when we're back in the same room together. I'm making an effort on our part when we're on the dais to be using what Bud's doing and like Amanda's doing, and I have, so if we, we can collectively make an effort for that, I think that's part of our leadership to our community and showing that we care a lot about our environment. So, thank you, Sustainable Wheat Ridge. You guys do great work, and I'm ready to buckle up and see what's next. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Additional questions or comments from council? Well, it looks like we've got all the questions. I want to thank you again for coming. A great presentation. Thank you for your work. These are, these are great goals for us. They're great strides and great progress that we've made, and we've only sort of touched the top of the iceberg. So, I'm really looking forward to, to seeing a great robust, you know, more robust things in our community. So, thank you all very much. Please, please thank your committee for the great work that they do, and we look forward to having you back for another report. So, be safe, and thanks for joining us. Okay, we will go now to our third agenda item. This is staff reports, and I will go to Mr. Goff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have several this evening. Try to go through them fairly quickly, but lots going on still. Just want to make council, city council aware of some issues with housing that Jeffco Human Services and Colorado Division of Homeland Security has been working on to make sure that we're, have housing for our homeless population. As you can imagine, with this COVID event, we do have a large amount of COVID positive cases in our homeless population. And the state has been working with the different human services agencies across the state to identify places to put these folks so that they can quarantine, be quarantined and get well. In our area of town, they've identified three locations, two hotels in Lakewood, but then also the Holiday Inn in Wheat Ridge. And the Holiday Inn is actually their first choice for numerous reasons. One, that the Holiday Inn has, has done this in a couple of other states right now. So, they have a program and a plan in place to do this very efficiently. And they can also provide the wraparound services that are needed for these, these folks that, that need to convalesce in the hotel. So, it's probably going to start as early as the end of this week or the first of next week. And they're going to start with 21 room blocks at a time. And we don't know how many rooms are going to be needed, but they'll start with 25. And Holiday Inn only has 103 rooms total. But if, if that for some reason, I think that the hotel management doesn't want to go more than 75 in that hotel. If they reach that amount, I'm assuming they'll go to the other hotels in Lakewood. So, any questions on that? I don't have a lot of details about it, but if there's questions I can't answer, I can get you some information back.
Okay, Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, is it providing shelter for those individuals experiencing homelessness that have tested positive for COVID-19, or is it for any homeless person regardless of testing?
It's primarily for those that have tested positive or if, if folks have been exposed or, or at higher risk, but primarily for those have that tested positive.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions? Ms. Nosler Beck.
Thanks. And I just wanted to know what happens, like can, if the, there are known cases of coronavirus in the hotel, the rest of the hotel can operate? I just, how does that work like?
Well, for the most part, most hotels are not operating right now.
Right.
Unless, you know, some of our budget motels are because they, they are housing long-term residents who maybe are low income. But the Holiday Inn, I believe, I'm not sure if they have any, any rooms filled at this point. So, it would be strictly, the whole hotel would be reserved for COVID recovery only.
And what happens to the, like, is it Holiday Inn employees who are there?
Yep, and that's one, another reason why Holiday Inn is a top choice because they, their employees are willing to, to continue working there, at least some of them. But they're also looking for many volunteers. That's why we don't have an exact date when it will start. But Salvation Army will be involved, and they need volunteers for food drop-offs and, and other, other things like that. So.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Goff, I'll just kind of ask that the Holiday Inn and their, their workforce that would be doing it have appropriate PPEs and testing and, and the capacity to safely care for these, this group of individuals.
Exactly. They have, I've already seen they, some of the protocols they have set up, such as they'll still provide cleaning services every three days, and they will drop off a bag for the residents who will put their laundry in the bag. And so, there's going to, they're, they're trying to minimize the, the contact between staff and, and the residents. So, and again, as, as I said, Holiday Inn has, has done this before, so they know how to do it. And they will be, the county's working with FEMA to reimburse them for the rooms. FEMA would cover up to 75% of the cost, and then the county's looking, trying to figure out how to cover the additional 25%.
Thank you. Ms. Weaver.
Mr. Goff, you said they were looking for volunteers. Is that, is that something that community members can volunteer? And what organizations would they contact, like for food delivery or something like that? What?
Let me, again, I don't have a lot of details. This has all been run through Jeffco Human Services. I just, today, let me ask that question, and I'll get response back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions from council? Okay, thank you.
I have several other things, Mr. Mayor.
Please continue.
I'll try to pick through some of these that are easier. Just a quick update, the, the westbound I-70 off-ramp is scheduled to open April 24th, Kim. Is that right? April 24th? So, at the end of this, this week, I guess, Friday. So, we'll be getting a press release out and information about that traffic change. Obviously, it'll be a little bit traffic change. If you're going to get off at I-70 westbound, you're going to, you're not going to get off at 32nd anymore. You're going to get off a little bit before that. So, that is kind of, that is the first phase. The second phase will be a temporary on-ramp, which will be open sometime in May. Then sometime next year, they'll have the new flyover permanent on-ramp, westbound on-ramp, done sometime next year. Did I say that right, Kim? So, there, it's kind of in phases. But so, good news there. That's continuing to move forward. Any questions on that? We did get, oh, just, just a quick update on the, if you may have seen the news, Congress is working on a stimulus package, which they're calling 3.5. This is potentially going to add 470 billion to incentives for the COVID response. And 310 billion of that will be for the, the PPP program, the paycheck protection program. As you know, it ran out of money. It originally had 350 billion in that program for the first go around. So, what I've heard, it's imminent that this is going to be approved by Congress. So, there'll be some additional funding available for our small businesses. So, then they are still working on potentially a fourth stimulus package that may provide more direct funding to local governments such as Wheat Ridge. As you know, the, the first stimulus package that was, went out, the money is only going to the states and any municipalities or counties over 500,000 in population. So, Jefferson County is, is one of five counties in Colorado that's going to receive a direct allocation. They are, they have submitted their certification, which was due on last Friday. They're potentially, I think, they potentially could get about, I think, $100 million. I believe they are having, the county managers having discussions with, with the Board of County Commissioners on how that money potentially could be shared with the cities in, in Jefferson County that did not receive any direct allocation. Face coverings. As you all know, the, the governor issued an executive order a few days ago, I think April 17th, that all employees in critical businesses must wear face coverings, and that includes our employees. And, but we did get a request from an employee that works at a, an essential business in Wheat Ridge that our citizens are not necessarily required to wear face coverings when they come in. And so, I guess the question is for council, is that something city council wants to consider? Implementing some type of executive order that citizens who are frequenting critical businesses as defined in the governor's order must wear face mask or face coverings. There are, there are at least, I found out from one, two communities in Wheat Ridge so far. I just sent out a list of questions today. Two, two other communities are doing something similar. Greenwood Village is requiring anybody that comes into City Hall has to have a mask on. And I believe Hayden was the other community. They require anybody, any citizen that goes into an essential business such as this grocery store, they have to wear a face covering.
Ms. Hultine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do you know, is this something the county's looking at at all, Patrick? Have you heard anything?
Not that I'm aware of, no. I could talk to the public health department, but it hasn't been anything that's come out since. And, and again, the, the state, the governor's order is just a strong recommendation that citizens wear face masks, but it's not required to wear one when you go into a critical business.
Would we be able to provide masks for people?
Probably not. We have very limited masks right now, even for our police department and the hospitals. But you know, it's, it doesn't have to be a mask. It just has to be a face covering. So, and you know, there's, there's plenty of resources out there that, that instruct people how to make a mask out of a bandana or scarf. Yeah, underwear. Yeah.
All right.
Ms. Weaver, and then Ms. Hutchinson.
Just to answer your question, Mr. Goff, I, I would be supportive of something like this. Just working in food distribution right now, it's something that I'm really keenly aware of. And, and even if it's just a bandana, I, I think it's really, really key. And it's, it, it also just shows respect for, for everyone that's, that's on the front lines of, of the medical part of this. So, that would, that would be my opinion.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good. I do recommend that people would wear a mask because you can have COVID and be totally asymptomatic. So, you might not have any symptoms at all, and you're walking around, and I just think it's safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional discussion on this issue? Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is, given that we would be putting this out as some kind of order, what is the enforcement procedure around this, and how would this be enforced?
Well, I, you know, I think one way, and the mayor received, actually is one that received the, the voice or the call from a, one of our workers in Wheat Ridge at an establishment. And she was told by her company that the company would not enforce citizens wearing masks unless there was some type of governmental order. So, at least at this, this one company, they, they, if Wheat Ridge had some type of declaration that citizens must wear masks or face coverings to enter a critical business, I think this, this one, at least this one company would enforce it. You know, we, obviously, we wouldn't be able to enforce it necessarily. You know, we don't have the resources to do that, but I think it's just maybe one more way to, to get a message out, and, and if the businesses can enforce it, put signs up and, and tell folks that they have to have a mask on before they come in. I think that might be one way that it could get enforced.
And I'm not opposed to, you know, issuing some kind of order in this regard. Obviously, it makes, you know, common sense as far as public health is concerned. My only issue is regarding enforcement and how do we go about caring for this enforcement and this order? And so, if businesses are willing to help us with that, that's great. But I think it just needs to be clear that this is for entry into, you know, essential businesses and not necessarily if someone's out walking around not near anybody. That, that we don't have resources wasted by people calling into the city and snitching on their neighbors and just being clear about where, when and where this is required.
We're getting those calls today.
Mr. Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I agree with Mr. Urban. This is kind of a, it's one of those like slippery slopes. I feel like we've been on a slippery slope for a while. We're, I feel like we're slowly taking away people's freedoms. I understand we're doing that for, for health reasons, and that's important. So, I would, I would agree that I, I think it would actually be good for us as, as a city to put an order like that out because I think it'll help the businesses. It's kind of nice just to be able to go, well, I don't know, the city said we had to do that, so we have to, we have to abide by that. So, that kind of takes it out of the businesses' hands. I've walked into a few restaurants the last couple of days, and it's been a little off-putting when I walk into a mask and their employees don't have it, and so it's a little, it's a little weird. So, I'm, I'm kind of glad that it's, it's a requirement. They're wearing it now. But I do, I, I think I would, I would agree that it's, it's probably time that we go ahead and, whether there's teeth in it or not, it'll help those businesses quite a bit if we say that it's a requirement.
Ms. Nosler Beck.
Thanks. I, I wonder if it's possible for us to do some kind of, like, education prior to making it a requirement? Just because there, it is essential services, businesses that are, that are open. And so, people are out there, and I'm just thinking of someone who has made the decision to go to the grocery store, and maybe they, you know, are 80 years old, and they get there and they can't go in because they don't have a face mask on. I, I just want to make sure that there's an education component to this so that we're not taking away a person's ability to get the services that they need.
Ms. Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I seriously think that people already know about wearing masks, like going to the grocery store. I've been there. It's kind of like a sci-fi movie or something. It's kind of scary. But it's not just that. It's also the distancing of being away from people. And this is something that we don't even know what, what's really going on with this, and it's changing like every day. It's a safety issue and put a sign on the business. You know, we request that you wear a mask for your safety and our employees' safety, and that's pretty clear. I, I think you would have to be in a cave to not know what's going on, and I think people do want to be safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Nosler Beck.
Just to, just to respond to that, I, I'm not saying that we shouldn't post anything. I'm saying that we need to probably also do some type of education along with it that like Wheat Ridge has done this, and if we can have businesses and, and folks help us amplify that this is now a requirement. Amplify that this is now a requirement. Um and do it in ways outside of like social media. Like if it's a a robo-call or something through to to folks.
Thank you, Ms Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um I, you know, I I would support. Uh doing, you know, doing our uh our own citywide mandatory masks. Um but I hear what um Councilwoman Nosler Beck is saying. And so. If that was something we did, I would want to make sure that it wasn't um. Effective immediately, if it would be like effective within seven days. And we would have to work with all of our, let's say, larger. Um essential businesses, so uh all our grocery stores. Um our, you know, large liquor stores um would have to work with them to make sure that there's postings. For maybe like a week before it went into effect. And then we would also have to try to reach out to. Um the Wheat Ridge Business Association, the Chamber, uh you know, the Rotary and. And ask them to reach out to all their small businesses because if they have a, if they have small businesses that are essential businesses. To make sure that they got that information. And so I, I would be supportive of it. Um and I also support uh Councilwoman Nosler Beck's idea of some sort of. Figuring out how to notify if we had like a week to make sure we could notify people also.
Thank you. Uh Mr. Goff, let me ask you, is this something that that uh we might consider at our council meeting next week and. Be able to do some uh public information uh and sort of merchant coordination over the week and. The other thing that comes to my mind and uh is that. W- would it be possible or how, how might we at our grocers and and those particular businesses be able to. To have some extra masks there if a, you know, if a customer wasn't, didn't, wasn't able to show up with one, would they be able to. To get one there and and um so it wouldn't be expensive or or embarrassing or something in that we might be able to facilitate. Uh you know, uh compliance, I think is really what we're looking to do.
Yeah, we, obviously, we would, we could educate as much as we can and try to get the information out. You're not, you're not gonna catch everybody, as you know. Um and but we we could do our best to do that, work with our businesses. Um the mask situation is 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 is. Very limited. Um we can't, we barely have enough for our police officers. Um and we're worried we're gonna be running out, so we don't have any masks. Uh I don't think we can get any from the health department. Um folks, you know, can make masks. Um um I I know community members are starting to make masks and share them with their neighbors. Um you know, we just don't have a stock, stockpile of of masks that we can share. Um. You know, we're, we're worried about once we open up our city facilities, um. You know, we're gonna be requiring and asking that everybody has a mask when they come in too, and we're not gonna provide them because we don't, we just don't have any. Um so, you know, we can do our best to um, you know, work with all of our different uh businesses and and uh. Um and and try to, try to make this as easy as possible. Um you know, you don't want to wait too long. Um. The whole point of this is so people aren't spreading covid and, you know, I think a week would probably be okay, but. Um we don't know how much longer this is gonna last anyway, so.
Thank you, Ms Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could we just make a recommendation um in terms of. Uh the city of Wheat Ridge recommends that you wear masks and in buildings so that it. It's not an absolute requirement so that people aren't thrown out of places or not allowed to enter. But it's, eh I I think it was said earlier, it eh as a business, it just, it helps to have. The the city recommending something that then a sign can be put up of, hey, we'd really appreciate it if you'd wear a mask. Um because. I'm just curious, if if it needs to have teeth or it need, because if we do require it, we do. Sort of have to have masks and we don't have masks. And um and I think we will end up in the situation that that both the mayor and and. Uh Ms Nosler Beck mentioned. And so could it just be a recommendation?
Well, sure. Uh again, it depends what the goal is here and.
Yeah.
The the state, the governor's already recommended it, right? It's, it's already a strong recommendation in the governor's order that everybody wears masks. When um you're gonna be um, you can't social distance. And you know, the concern that we got, that the mayor got from this employee, she works in a grocery store, she's required to wear a mask. She's, she's afraid of for her, her life and her health. And there are citizens coming in without masks on and she's concerned. She's gonna die um for selling groceries. So I mean, that's what we're trying to address. Um. And I I get it, it's, it's difficult. Yes, um I I don't think we necessarily have to provide masks if if we tell people they have to wear them. Um again, a mask or face, it doesn't have to be a mask, a face covering.
A face covering, excuse me.
Very easy to get and we we just cannot provide them. Um if you guys want to do this, we 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 have no way to provide masks unless you all want to start. Getting your sewing machines going.
Right. Thank you, thank you.
Uh Mr. Urban. You're not done.
All right, how about that? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh I would say that uh our city manager currently has the authority under the civil emergency powers to. Enact this. I would encourage him to do that, the, or to do that, you know, tomorrow as, as soon as possible, though. The ability to receive a mask or get a mask is incumbent on the residents and. I think that this would be a nod to our grocery store workers and other essential workers that we appreciate them risking their lives to go to work. And for a lot of us, uh we don't have that same, you know, threat every morning when we get up and. That uh one thing that I would ask that we do is to put some sort of definitive timeline on this or. Uh a trigger for when it is not needed any further, um so that we can, it's sort of, it can expire at some point as opposed to just an open-ended. Uh requirement to have masks. So uh that's my two cents.
Good. Mr. Stites.
Um thank you, Mr. If it was, like for me, if it was a matter of people just getting themselves sick, I don't care. If you want to show up and get yourself sick, that's your business. But it's, it's the fact that you can get other people sick, that's, that's the problem for me. And the fact that. You can get other people sick, you know, when, when we're sparring here at the martial arts school, the only pads that like I require my staff to wear is stuff that will protect the other people. I don't care if they get hit. So um you know, it's, it's the same thing. I I expect that we show respect to those employees and and to the other customers. Um by wearing that mask, right? If we're gonna make a requirement, I think we should make a requirement. And we're not talking about somebody gotta go get an N ninety-five respirator mask to walk into King Supers. We're talking about they have to have their face covered. So go out to the car, get a T-shirt wrapped around your face and go shopping, right? So I, it's either requirement or it's not, like. I I I get, I get frustrated watching press conferences with our, well, it's a requirement, we'd really like, like. It's either requirements or not, right? So I think that we shouldn't put, kind of mess around with this a lot. I think we should make a decision, it is or it isn't. Um and I do agree, though, that it should maybe take effect in seven days and there should be some sort of a warning sign or something up at all the stores or up at all the. The the businesses that say, come Monday, the whatever it is, you must wear a mask to enter, and then it's enforced. And that's how you, you do it.
Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would suggest that this requirement uh to wear masks coincides with the expiration of the stay-at-home order. So that we have that time to uh put this in place and educate. But that it's sort of a seamless transition from the stay-at-home order to this mask requirement because we will see more people out and about. Once the stay-at-home order is lifted and this would give us a, a good, you know, fair amount of time, but not too much time to get this done, so.
Uh Ms Hoppy.
Uh I'll let Ms Dozeman go first. She hasn't spoken yet.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see Ms Dozeman's hand. Ms Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Councilmember Hoppy. Uh I would agree that we should enact this. Um and. I I don't know if I understood you correctly, uh Mr. Urban, about you would like, like this. To expire when the stay-at-home order does. Is that correct? To be extended beyond that.
No, it would, it would, it would occur directly after the stay-at-home order is expired, which is, I I'm assuming the twenty-sixth.
Okay, sorry, I just wanted to make sure that I I understood that point because um I think that as we start to see some of the stay-at-home. Order lifted eh is when we really want to be um expedient with our. Orders and have them be effective in in our city. Um and if it feel, if it gives businesses a little bit more. Um enforcement of, you know, okay, well, you know, this is. Wheat Ridge is requiring this or or mandating this and therefore we are as as a a business. Um that's fine, but at the same token, are we going to be enforcing businesses? So are we going to be putting enforcements in place for businesses that are not complying as well?
Or is the city gonna enforce? Is that what you're asking? Well, again, I, you know, eh there's a lot of laws on the books that we can't enforce. And I think this is just a way that is, it's true. People speed all the time. We're not enforcing speeding right now to get it out there, right? Um we're trying to limit. We're, unless, you know, you're flying a hundred, a hundred and twenty miles an hour down Wattsworth, but. We're trying to, trying to decrease the amount of of contact we're having between people at this time. Um eh we'll do our best to enforce. Um we'll work with the business community to see if they, they can help us enforce. Um but we're not gonna send a cop out every time somebody doesn't have a mask on at the grocery store.
Okay. And I just wanted to thank Councilmember Nosler Beck for dropping off masks to my home, especially for my children. You're amazing. Thank you. I do have a sewing machine and I am making masks if anybody needs one, but I realize I just said that on a city council meeting, so. I don't know how many orders I'm gonna get now.
Thirty thousand, please.
Hopefully, it's a good markup, so. Just, uh Ms Hoppy.
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um at at this point, it sounds like the, the majority of us are on the same page of. Um having our own city of Wheat Ridge mandatory face covering when in sent, when um. Visiting essential businesses um and that we need to make sure we work with our essential businesses to get the, the message out to. Um to people prior to enforcement and that it coincides with um the end of the stay-at-home order, which is the twenty-sixth. Which would make that the twenty-seventh, which is um next Monday. And so I'm, I'm just gonna ask for a consensus. And just ask for a, a show of hands to see if I kind of covered that and if we're on that page.
I have a question before we go forward.
So Holtein, a question on the consensus, yes.
I, I'm not following the coinciding with the stay-at-home order. So the current stay-at-home order. Is through the.
Twelve twenty-seventh and I was gonna give.
It, it would be that it would start, it would start on the twenty-sixth, the time when the stay-at-home order expires. Or the twenty-seventh, because it would have to be the next day.
So I was gonna give an update on that. If you haven't seen, if you didn't see the governor's uh press conference this afternoon, um he is going to lift the stay-at-home order on the twenty-seventh. But we're gonna move into a a new phase of what he's calling safer at home. And I think Councilmember Urban was suggesting that that, that's the phase where we were asking that folks to wear. To stay safer at home, where you should wear masks more often, uh when you're in these critical businesses. So. Um on April twenty-seventh or twenty-eighth, whenever, I don't know when exactly, if it's midnight when that um is lifted. That's when our, our new um. Uh whatever you want to call it, uh order would, would be in place. And then put a deadline on it. We'd have to figure out the deadline.
Okay.
That makes sense.
So the consensus would be to have the order in place commencing on the uh twenty-seventh or.
When, when the stay-at-home order is lifted and then figure out some type of end date based on what Mr. Urban said.
And that would give us like a week to be able to um try to get some information out there to our businesses. So I, I don't think we got the count on the consensus, though. I just want to make sure that we.
Ms Hutchinson had a, had a question also on the consensus, so if we can hold on that, Ms Hutchinson.
Yes, I just have um a comment about, I think we need to be very careful. Just because people can start going out and doing things. We don't know how this is gonna turn out. So in order to have a deadline of how long we should be doing this. It's kind of a day-to-day thing. If we get it where people are actually wearing the mask, that's good. And then we can say after a while how we see how this is going. Um, okay, it looks like the curve is pretty good. We don't have to do this. We. We have no idea how to anticipate how this is gonna go. So to just put a flat deadline out there. Okay, well, in two weeks, then you don't have to wear a mask anymore. We have no idea. I would like to just have it where people are getting used to wearing the masks when they go into these businesses and. And things. And then if the curve is good and people aren't having to go to the hospital so much. Take the, you know, the idea from the governor about what, what he thinks. I mean, we're, we're just Wheat Ridge, but we still have covid around here. And to me, it's scary. So, you know, um that's the best way to not get something is to have a little bit of concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Um s- so, but we've got a consensus on the table and we also uh. As I understand, the consensus would be to put the, put the public record out there now that we're looking to do this thing. We have a meeting a week from tonight. If we wanted to. To bring this up at the council meeting, we'd have an opportunity for uh the public to weigh in on this matter if we wanted to take public comment on this. So. Uh with that, I'd like to go ahead and see if we have a show of hands on the consensus that Ms Hoppy raised.
I, I would just like to.
Okay, Mr. Urban.
Thank you. Um uh that's a fine consensus. Um but we don't necessarily need council action to uh to push this forward, right? This is.
No, we're gonna, we're gonna direct the, we're gonna have a consensus for the city manager to act on.
Okay. And uh to Councilmember Hutchinson's point regarding a timeframe, I agree that we really cannot. Uh prognosticate as to how, you know, how long it's gonna last or what have you, but. As hard it is, it is to develop these restrictions and put them in place, it's gonna be equally hard to lift them. Uh at some point in the future and and giving us a thirty-day, sixty-day timeframe on some of these restrictions gives us the opportunity to review them at that point and see. Should we continue the, the restriction for another thirty days? And so to just leave it open-ended. Uh makes it a lot more difficult to re- to review it later on as to when we should be lifting it um down the road. So giving us a timeframe of thirty or sixty days.
How about we just say the end of May unless um extended or rescinded?
Yeah, something like that. And it can always be, you know, continued on as the situation permits.
Okay, let, let's see a show of hands on that consensus. Okay, looks like we have uh consensus on that, Mr. Goff.
Yes, um.
Good, good discussion. Thank you, everybody.
I will say to bring this one up, but um I think I need to get some direction. Uh short-term rentals. Um if you remember, we put a ban in place that expires on April thirtieth. And uh it's, it's April twentieth now. If if that's, if something we want to extend, um we probably need to do that so that. The owners of the short-term rentals know so that they're not starting to book anything um past April thirtieth. So. Any, any thoughts or desires about extending that past April thirtieth or letting it expire on April thirtieth?
Uh Ms Nosler Beck.
Has there been any feedback from, I I haven't heard anything. I haven't gotten any emails about short-term rental. Anymore. And I know if, if anyone else has.
I have not. We, we did send the um the police department out to one, the rental in question um. Because there was, there was um led, people, folks alleging that they were still renting even after the ban was in place. So we, we sent somebody out to make sure that. They understood that they couldn't do that until end of April, but haven't heard anything since.
Additional discussion. Uh Ms Holtein.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh just sort of circling back to the conversation earlier about the holiday and potentially converting. To being a um a shelter for uh homeless people with symptoms of covid nineteen. Um I have talked to a couple, I I've got a couple of um Airbnb hosts in my district who have been in touch with me. And um, you know, they do provide an option for our, you know, healthcare providers and people. Who do need to come here, who might not feel comfortable staying in a hotel where there's increased levels of exposure. So um I I know that we enacted that around concerns around a specific. Unit that seems to keep having problems and that seems to be a problematic owner. But I think um most Airbnb house I'm hearing nationally are just, you know, nobody's traveling. But I feel like having that option available for, you know, people who work at Lutheran or people who have to come here because they've got sick family members. Um I think it does provide a healthier and safer alternative. For people than hotels where I think there's a, an increased risk, risk of exposure. So I would support letting. for people than hotels where I think there's a, an increased risk, risk of exposure. So I would support letting that expire.
Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I would disagree on that, that there's no indication that, uh, a, a short-term rental is, is cleaner or healthier for a healthcare worker, especially if a previous guest, guest less than twenty-four hours came from another state or, or even from our state and had COVID nineteen, there's no way to, to know that. And I haven't heard anything specific from Lutheran in regards to needing additional accommodations for staff. And that may be something to check into to see what, you know, what their, you know, specific needs are as opposed to us sort of assuming what those needs might be. Um, and I would agree that it's somewhat of a non-issue because the, it, people aren't traveling and coming. But, um, it, uh, and I don't even know if the existing short-term rental, uh, property owners are even aware that we banned it for the past thirty days. So, um, that's part of the problem that we have in not being able to regulate and communicate with them is we don't even know if they know what we're doing. Um, so I, I would be in favor of, you know, keeping it going for another thirty days until this is over. But, um, the, uh, I guess we'll just, um, like to hear what everybody else has to say.
Uh, Mr. Stites and then Ms. Hutchinson?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't see that anything has really changed in the last couple of weeks as far as the situation goes. Um, I still don't think we want a, a bunch of new people running around the city, running around our neighborhoods, um, essentially as, um, far as travelers go. Um, and, and I still think if somebody from Lutheran or, or somebody needs to quarantine themselves, it's still a fourteen-day type of process. So, um, I don't see that we need to change it. I just think we should extend it, at least, um, probably what we're doing with the, with the mask order, that we extend it through, through May.
Ms. Hutchinson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm not sure that the census at Lutheran is critical right now. What they are requiring people who are not in patient services or direct patient care to take one day a week of their PTO off until the end of May. Waiting to see if there's going to be, uh, another resurgence of the COVID going on. So they are having people cut their hours. So, you know, that's not direct nurses, but that's other people. So. I agree with the end of May would be good, so we can see how things are going. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Dozeman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I happen to be one of those people, Judy, from, from Lutheran that's required to take our PTO. But, uh, I also haven't heard any, um, requests for, um, you know, quarantining stays. And I, I don't think that the issue has resolved enough to where we would lift the, the two-week minimum stay requirement. So I, I would like to see this, uh, extended, uh, to, to May as well. And, you know, the same, I, I didn't, I skimmed the safer at home, um, point. So I don't know if they're going to be, you know, lifting some of those regulations as far as, as short-term lodging. Do, do you know, Patrick?
Well, they, they currently don't, um, have any restrictions on accommodations in the, in the governor's order. Um, that's something we put on locally. Um, so that won't, won't be something that will be lifted at the state level.
Okay, yeah, I, I thought you had mentioned earlier that they didn't have a lot of, um, visitors. And I didn't know if that was because of any restrictions in place or if that's just because we haven't had a lot of travelers.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, yeah, so I would like to see it extended, um, at least through mid-May and until we can kind of get a better grip on the situation in the fallout, um, of the last couple of weeks and see kind of how things, uh, progress or hopefully digress in the coming weeks. Thank you.
We have consensus among council to, uh, extend this thirty days? The, the current order? Not really, Ms. Hoppy?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'm, for me, again, it's, it's a completely different issue. So if people are doing what they're supposed to be doing and if they're wearing their face mask when they are going shopping and if they're limiting their, their time, their space and time with, um, strangers or neighbors, um, then someone in a short-term rental would pose no more risk than, than a neighbor would pose. If, and what if that neighbor was even in an essential business? So, so for me, it's, that's not the issue. For me, I personally feel like crap. All, all short-term rental properties, hotels, motels, STRs should instead have a, like, three-day quarantine time after, um, someone, after anybody leaves it before somebody else comes back into it. Because even with your fourteen day, somebody could leave on the fourteenth day, come in the next day for another fourteen days and it, we really haven't solved any problems there. And so personally, I feel like we've addressed this the wrong way and, um, I would like for it to expire and for us to look at, um, a better way to move forward. So I, I won't be giving consensus support to continue.
Additional discussion? Okay, it looks like we don't have any, any change in attitudes.
So it'll expire at the end of the month?
Expire at the end of the month, I guess, unless there's a consensus to do otherwise.
Okay. Um, one last item, uh, just, just a quick update, um, again, on the governor's, uh, press conference late this afternoon. Um, he is going to let the stay-at-home order, um, expire on April twenty-seventh and move into what he's calling safer at home. And, um, luckily, he, we've, I think we reached an eighty to eighty-five percent, um, compliance rate with the social distancing over the last month, which has, um, and helped us get our numbers down, which is great. Um, so the, the mayor's or the governor's goal over this, this next period is to continue with at least a sixty to sixty-five percent, um, compliance rate with the social distancing. So, um, that means people are gonna have, um, more interactions with, with others. Um, but they believe if, if they maintain, if we maintain that level, um, we can keep the, uh, COVID cases below the, the, two, I think it's two thousand, um, number, because that's the number of ICU beds we have available across the metro area. So their goal is to keep the cases down below two thousand, um, at least at hospital admissions. Um, so it's, it's still a little bit of, um, we don't have the full, uh, written, um, order out from the mayor yet or the governor yet. But so we'll, we'll be evaluating that, um, from the city's basis on how we're gonna open up different things. Um, we still can't open up, um, rec centers or gyms at this point. Um, restaurants and bars cannot open up yet. The governor's hoping that maybe by mid-May, there could be, um, loosening of that, um, restriction. Um, his, his main comment was that he still urges residents who can work at home to, to keep doing that, um, at least through May and maybe through June, to stay home as much as possible and avoid large, um, gatherings and to wear masks. Um, so one thing I would like to ask city council tonight, um, at least to get a consensus or at least a head nod that we continue, um, at least through May to holding our meeting, council meetings virtually. Um, we are working on a system, and Ally, if she's still on, can, can speak to this. Um, we may get to a point where we have a joint or, uh, a dual virtual and dual in, in, in-person meeting at some point, maybe in June. We don't recommend doing that in May yet. Um, our system doesn't necessarily have the capabilities to do both at the same time. Um, or at least not i- in a very efficient manner. So, um, first question is, are, is council okay continuing at least through May, um, with virtual meetings?
Discussion, Mr. Urban, uh, Ms. Hoppy and Ms. Nossler Beck?
Uh, I would be okay with continuing, uh, to be held virtually, uh, through the month of May and evaluating it at the end of May.
Ms. Hoppy?
Um, I agree because we can't necessarily have an in-person meeting without, while not having any large gathering. And so I would just wanna make sure that we're still, um, maintaining, um, everybody's safety. So I would agree with the end of May.
Ms. Nossler Beck?
Um, I just had a question about if there was any definition given to what a large gathering was.
I believe over ten.
Okay.
I believe is what I heard. I don't know if, sure if anybody else is listening, but again, it was, we're waiting. Cory's shaking his head, so I think ten at this point. But it's gonna change. I think they wanna watch this daily and weekly. Um, the, the, the governor's calling April twenty-seventh to, to May fourth, kind of the phase-in period from stay-at-home to safer-at-home. And they really wanna keep an eye on the, on the, the trends. And if, if, if things shoot up again, they may, they may, um, put some of these restrictions back in. But if we continue on a downward trend, I think he's gonna continue loosening, um, these restrictions as we go through May. He said it potentially could go through June, but I think ten is the answer, uh, about.
Thanks.
Additional discussion?
Okay, we'll do that. I, that's all.
To extend those out?
Yeah, through, at least through May at this point, and we'll, we'll reevaluate at the end of the month.
Okay.
Thank you all. That's all I got.
That's all you have? Okay, uh, we will now go to item number four. Uh, actually, before we go to item number four, we're going to take about a ten-minute break. We'll reconvene at about eight-twenty. I'll reconvene our study session and go to elected officials reports, item number four. Subparagraph A, the business stabilization program update was brought forward by Mr. Urban and Ms. Hoppy, and I will uh recognize Mr. Urban.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to bring in Steve Art to give us a quick update on where we're at with the business stabilization program and then go from there.
Uh, Mr. Art.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Councilman Urban. Um, as you know, on April the tenth, we opened our um small business sustainability grant program, um which provided up to five thousand dollar grants to small businesses under twenty five employees in the city of Wheat Ridge. Uh, we opened that for one week and closed it on Friday, last Friday at twelve noon. And had approximately a hundred and thirty one approved applications in that process. In order to be approved, um obviously had to be a city of Wheat Ridge business um with a storefront in a commercially or industrially zoned piece of property. And also have a um active business license as of February first um of twenty twenty in order to apply. Um, the task force did meet last Friday via Zoom meeting, kind of came up with the ground rules and um how we will, how we will evaluate, the reviewers will evaluate this program. Um, and their evaluations are slowly coming into me, um, the, the review that they have done. And that close, that will be done tomorrow. We meet at two o'clock in the afternoon to go over the final grants to be awarded. Did I forget anything, Mr. Urban?
Uh, do, do we know the total amount that's been asked? I know that there's a hundred and thirty one or a hundred and thirty five that, that came in.
Approximately give or approximately six hundred and thirty, I think a six hundred and thirty six thousand has been requested.
Okay.
Give or take.
Uh, additional discussion.
Well, one thing I would throw out there for a discussion is, uh, we've obviously heard from various uh business owners and, and applicants. And one thing that Steve mentioned was uh that there were a hundred and thirty one applicants whose applications met the criteria. They haven't been necessarily approved for any funding because we only have uh two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of funding available for the hundred and thirty applicants. And so the task force will be meeting to discuss whether each applicant gets a full five thousand dollars. Uh, and once we reach that uh number, then the rest will be denied. Or uh another discussion point is to open a second round of funding uh to take into consideration some of the concerns that were raised by previous business owners. And allow those that were denied during the first round to reapply during a second round of funding.
Additional discussion. We'll go to Ms. Holtein and Ms. Hoppy.
Uh, Councilmember Urban, can you clarify your um, the option that you presented around a, a second round of funding? Would that entail designating a, like a portion of the, the two hundred and fifty thousand that's been designated for the applicants that came in and set aside a part of that for a second round? Can you just clarify what that, that second round means?
So in my mind, that second round would uh bring in an additional four hundred and twenty five thousand dollars to allow us to meet the need that's been presented to us, which is two fifty plus uh four twenty five is six seventy five. And we would then uh fund the first round with the two fifty, given the criteria that we have. And council wants to set additional criteria for a second round or uh do something different with that second round, we can do that. But my ask would be that we look at an additional four twenty five to bring us to a total amount of six seventy five.
Thank you. I have Ms. Hoppy next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Because I would just like to ask, I know, I know that the city staff worked on um looking at our financials and our budgets and and uh when they came up with the initial um number. And so my first question would be, do they think that they can find more money for a second round? And then my second um question would be, some of the um concerns that um, you know, uh, I've got email, phone calls, and then plus on Wheat Ridge Speaks is that some of the business owners didn't know that they were supposed to have um a business license. Um, and so while I understand when you register your name with the Colorado Secretary of State, it has a checklist and it says check with your local municipality to see what their licensing requirements are. And I also know that it's the, on our city website, it says doing business in Wheat Ridge and, and it tells you that you needed business license, but some people didn't have good information. So will there be something in the future that we can um do to make sure that that message gets out there even stronger? And then I would just ask maybe uh Mr. Urban and, and Mr. Art to address the um phone call that we had in about um the long term business and um what had happened with their license and, and what the committee has decided to do with those, those things.
Uh, does someone want to respond to that question?
Uh, yeah, I'll go to that, that uh second question that you had. Based on the criteria that we had, that uh business would be in good standing as of February first. I would, I would like to see, this is the kind of situation that I'd like to see us look at using a second round to cover some of these issues. Um, because uh I, I don't want to get into specific applicants uh applications, but I will say that there, in reviewing the applications today, there were several instances where the same address has multiple businesses or have multiple operations, as you will, um in various, you know, contracting subcontracting or two different, totally different businesses, but the same address. And so in some cases, an applicant has applied and uh an additional applicant from the same address is also applied. So um, you know, the uh, I, I would, you know, if I was looking at that, I'm not uh, um, I, I don't want to speak for the entire task force, but in my mind, a delinquent business license is different from having no license whatsoever. So technically that they had a license, but it's not um in good standing. So that there is, you know, again, there's a lot of gray area here, but when we only have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to divvy up, it, it begs us to have these sort of hard uh rules to it because we don't have enough to go around. But um, that's kind of the, the situation we're in.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna answer the first part of her question about getting the word out. Um, yeah, first off, in these tough times when we're all working out of our home, um, we've used as many avenues as we can to get the word out via Facebook, via Nextdoor, um, the city website, uh, the BizRidge site, uh, Wheat Ridge Business Association, the Chamber of Commerce, um, press releases sent out to all the media by our public information officer. So we got the word out there as best that we could in these times. And to try to roll out a program that we did in about ten days, we got it going.
Sure, I think that was awesome. I, what I was talking about getting the word out is like, when we hear, I didn't know I was supposed to have a license, then how do we, how do we address that like in the future? Um, so that, so this type of thing doesn't necessarily happen. And then, and also I was asking the city manager, we have any money?
Yeah. And Steve, to, to continue on the same line, Steve, you did check with, I think, um, at least four or five other cities that are, are that have current loan or grant programs, and they're also all requiring a business license.
Correct. And they pretty much guided theirs off our program. So yes.
Yeah.
February, March were they're mostly using.
Yeah, Janice, you know, I mean, it's, it's always difficult. I mean, I think in any situation, you're always going to hear from some, at least one person that says, well, I didn't know. Um, you know, we have over four thousand licensed businesses in, in the city. Um, when I first started with, in the city of Wheat Ridge, I, we beefed up our sales tax um division somewhat and um hired a new auditor. We sent that auditor out to um, to audit um our businesses to make sure they have licenses. And I, I know we found several hundred back then that they did not have a license and we got them licensed. Um, I, I know we, we currently try to um reach out and, and, and find some too. But I mean, there are a lot of these businesses we don't know about. They're
You froze up there, Patrick.
I think uh
He froze up on us, but I'll finish his converse, his, his thought, I, I believe. Um, it's very difficult for us.
Very froze.
Are you there, Patrick?
I am.
Okay, you froze, your picture's froze, but we can hear you.
Okay, you're back on now.
Okay, um, so I lost my train of thought now. Um. Yeah, so I mean, a lot of these businesses, we don't, we don't know they even exist, um, because a lot of them are in houses, um, their own houses, their home occupations, uh massage therapists, chiropractors. Um, so it, it's, it's difficult for us to reach out to them if we don't know they exist. Um, you know, we, we, we try to put as much information out on our website as possible and, and um, you know, there's always going to be somebody that, that doesn't license with us. We understand that. Um, to speak to your other question, I think, do we have the money? Um, you know, it's only been a couple of weeks. My financial analysis hasn't changed since I, I last spoke to city council on this. Um, sales tax is due today for the month of March, so we don't know what March numbers look like yet. Um, we will in about um, at the first of May, I'll have a better idea of what March looked like. So um, what I presented to you a couple of weeks ago really doesn't change. Um, if, you know, sure, we have the money, um, we, we could provide the money, but that means we're going to have to cut four hundred and fifty thousand probably from somewhere else. Um, if, if we don't, um, if revenues don't come in. Um, if you, if you, if we wait a few days to see what March looks like, and if it's better than we expected, um, I might have a better idea then of, of what additional um monies we might have.
Thank you. Um, I have next on my slate, Ms. Nosler back and then Mr. Stites and Ms. Dozeman.
Um, mine was, uh, my question was just kind of following up and really similar to what um Councilwoman Hoppy was discussing. Um, if there were a second round of um, of grants, of grants available, um, would it be possible to, I, I just, just to go with what Councilwoman Hoppy was saying, um, with something that we could do that I think would be a proactive, good thing in all of this is that if people are reaching out to us saying that they didn't know they needed a business license, at least we can get back to them and say like, get a business license, because if there is another grant that comes available, be ready and could we make, if we do get a second round of funding set, could we make it that, you know, their business license was active by May one? And I know I, I talked to Steve about this a little bit earlier because I had gotten a lot of the same calls I think everybody else had, but um I know there's like a thirty day, it like, it can take up to thirty days to get your business license. But at least like, if your application is in and you've paid and you're like trying, um, can that potentially get you there over the, over the hump? So, um, I just, I, I just really want to try and be as flexible as we can be because we're, we're, we're able to be more nimble um with, with our funding rather than, we're not the federal government, to be honest. So.
I think there's a possibility. I, I think my recommendation to you would be that you provide funding upon verification of a business license. I don't even think you want to make it that you paid your fee because there are times that businesses don't get a business license because maybe they're not in a correctly zoned place. You hate to give someone five thousand dollars, they don't get their business license. How do you get that money back? So if you were to do this again, my recommendation would be, all right, if someone doesn't have a business license or doesn't have an up to date, they, by the time they get funding, they either have their business license or are paid up for that year.
Thank you, Mr. Stites.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to preface my comments by saying that I have applied for the loan, so I'm one of those hundred and thirty one businesses, so take that as you will. Um, but I do want to say this, I, I got the same call that everybody else did. And, and, and while I, I feel bad for those businesses who didn't know, and, and I'm going to be honest too, as, as a business owner, I was one of those businesses about four or five years ago, and Patrick probably remembers the story, it probably so does Steve and, and Ken if he's still on. But we, we moved in the city, applied for our business license, you know, a twenty dollar simple thing. And after six months of construction and over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, we finally got our business license. So it's not a process of, hey, you know, I paid my twenty bucks and, and I'm in the club. I mean, there's, there's a lot that goes into this. Um, and, and, you know, frankly, as, as a weird business owner, I, you know, i- it's, it's not cool. I mean, for me at least, I, I don't think it's, it's cool for people to say, well, I didn't know. Well, because, you know, if you didn't know, you know, as part of being a business owner, and I feel bad, but you didn't know, you ought to know these things. Um, and you, or you learn an expensive lesson like I did, right? So, um, so there's that. Um, you know, it's, it's frustrating as a business owner because the PPP loans, all that stuff ran out quickly. So that was three hundred and some billion dollars. We're talking about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so it's going to go pretty quick. So um, I would love to see another round of funding and all that if we, if we can make it happen. But I don't believe that it should go to people who still don't have business licenses that are, that are current. Now, the call earlier, I feel is like, is a different situation. They've been in business for fifty nine years. They missed a month of, of filing a report or something like that. And that's, that's different. But um, if somebody hasn't had one and they've been operating for years, they should have it because it's a sales tax license too, I believe, right, Patrick or Steve? They, do they need both or they need one for the city of Wheat Ridge sales tax?
Two, two separate licenses.
Two separate licenses?
Yeah.
So they can have a sales tax license but not a business license?
Correct.
Okay, um, so they could be, they could have been paying sales taxes entire time in the city, but not have a business license?
Yeah, it's, but it's easier for us, someone paying sales taxes, easier for the, the licensing division to find out about those and say, hey, you need a business license also. Because they are making contact with city hall.
Okay, because that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars doesn't come out of nowhere and it's not federal money. This is money that our, our taxpaying businesses or taxpayers have paid into a system. So if you've been operating out of that system, you know, it's kind of like going to insurance or anything else. If you haven't been paying into the system, why would you get money out of the system when you need it? It doesn't make sense to me. But thank you.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So my question was to Steve or Patrick, just regarding the education around a business license um, and whether people who are uh joining the Wheat Ridge Business District or Wheat Ridge uh Chamber of Commerce or Business Association, if they have any kind of educational pieces surrounding that. Um, so that was my first question. And then my next question is for uh Councilmember Urban. You mentioned like five thousand dollars per business. Is that a set amount? Or are you guys going to be discussing a potential smaller amount to kind of spread it out a bit further?
I'll start off with the associations, the chamber and the business association. They do not have a standard handout that they give to every new business who joins up, saying you have to be, you have to have a business license, you have to have a sales license, you have to be fully up with the city. They're separate from the city. They're separate organizations from there. Um, certainly if someone were to make an inquiry to them of what do I need, normally the phone call comes to me and then we would start talking that process.
Is there, sorry, is there any way that we could potentially help those organizations with like maybe a one pager or something of that nature to kind of spread the word a little bit better?
Yeah, I, I've asked Steve to, to work with all the business associations to uh make sure that there's, there's sharing that information. Because we, we have found out through this that they're not, um, unfortunately. And I, I, in my mind, that's one, one role of a business association is to help your small, if you're a small business to educate them on what's, what the requirements are. And, and um, we're members of all those, those associations, so we can, we can beef that up.
Yeah, like maybe like a welcome packet or something that, that we put together and give to each new member or something on each of their websites or, or something of that nature to kind of get the, the word out. Because it sounds like it's not um well-known uh, just from some of the phone calls that I've been receiving of people within, that are, are members of those organizations and still don't have that information. So I think that that would be really helpful if we can, can get that going and then, sorry, Zach, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, you're fine.
One final comment, it's actually, and we're working internally, I believe, uh, Councilmember Hoppy asked about that, what are we doing internally? Once we get back into city hall, we'll start those conversations about what we do to try to get it out better to our local businesses.
Thank you. I had Ms. Hoppy and then Ms. Hutchinson.
Well, I um, I'd asked a question and
Mr. Urban.
Sorry, um, so speaking to the, the two hundred and fifty thousand, when the uh task force meets, we're going to discuss uh, based on the scores and the, the criteria that we have to see, you know, where everybody lands as far as the funding, we'd like to make it clean and give everybody a five thousand dollar amount. But we also understand that by giving it up a little bit more, that, that we'd be able to serve more people. And depending on the type of asks that are made, there was a few applicants that asked for less than the full five thousand, so we're going to look at that as well. Um, but until we get the whole task force together and, and see uh the group as a whole, it's going to be hard to, to, you know, give a definitive. We're going to give X number five thousand, X number twenty five hundred, um, until we get the full. we're gonna give X number five thousand, X number twenty-five hundred, um, until we get the full, uh, pool of applicants in front of us.
Thank you, uh, I have Ms. Hoppy in the queue.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to say that I, if, if after staff has an opportunity to look at our, um, financials, um, after the sales tax returns come in, and they feel like they, um, have some more money they could give to this program, um, then I would be happy to support that and happy to dis- support a second, a second round, um. But I just, just want to, you know, I, I know it's hard when we have larger cities around us like Arbada and Denver and Lakewood, and they have so much more money and so many more resources, and so, you know, it's, some people think that, well, this, this just isn't enough, you're not doing enough, it's not good enough, but I mean, we really are doing what we can, and, and so I just wanna put that out there that, you know, we, it's important to all of us that the small businesses survive, and so, um, you know, if we have more money, then great, I'd like to do that, but I also keep in mind that, you know, our, our city is, is a business itself. We have, you know, a lot of staff that we are responsible to. We have, you know, the majority of our budget is the police department, which equals safety for our residents, and so, um, I just like to remind people that, but I am supportive of a second round if we can find the funding.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, what I found out about Chamber of Commerce is, is that even though you're a business and you're part of Chamber of Commerce, you don't need to have a license, um. Myself, if I wanted to join Chamber of Commerce, I could do that as an individual, so that's not a requirement to be part of Chamber of Commerce. And I even wonder about Wheat Ridge Business Association, even the Rotary, I'm not sure what they do either, if that's something, um, that they put out there or not, but that is not a requirement to be part of Chamber of Commerce to, um, be a business, period, anybody can, can be in there. One concern that I do have is, um, as a city, we need to have seventeen million in reserve, is that right?
No, it's seven, seventeen percent of our annual.
Seventeen percent, okay. My concern about this is we haven't, we have all this going on right now, and we're saying, okay, let's give this money and this money, we haven't even gotten into our big weather season yet or anything, um, so I think we need, I would like us to have more than seventeen percent in reserves, because we don't know what's going on, how long this is gonna last, and Wheat Ridge hasn't laid off employees like Aurora, Broomfield, you know, all over the place, so we're in a time where nothing is static, we don't know what's going on, so I, I'm just kinda careful about, let's keep spending money, 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 that maybe we won't be having for a while, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, first of all, I just, I wanted to thank the committee that has been working on this, because uh, you have no easy task, and, um, and, and I thought long and hard about this, and I, and I, and I also wanna go back to, um, what Mr. Stites said in, in a moment, but, but this, we have asked this, this group to give out two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in less than two weeks, basically, and it's, it's just daunting, and come up with some, uh, s- some rules in which to do that in some sort of fair way. And so I, I think we really, we, we have to realize the timeline in which we've asked this to all happen. Um, and, and, and while I would like to catch everyone a- and deal with all of these issues, um, I feel like the committee's done an excellent job of getting a, a hundred and thirty people and applications and a process and all of these things. Um, so, so I would like to see this first round go forward as they have planned. Yes, it would be nice if there was, was extra money, um, but I am also very concerned about the fact that, that, that the projections may be very different, um, than even what, what Mr. Goff mentioned, uh, at the last meeting, um. To come back to the business license issue that, that, and, and I agree with Mr. Stites, as a small business owner myself, um, I, I've been licensed for a long time i- i- in Wheat Ridge, and while I, I feel very, I, I feel for those people who did not know about the licenses, um, it, it is something that is hard not to run into in your dealing with the city, uh, if you pay sales tax, if you are doing some of these things. So I, I guess I want to share that, while, while I know that there are people that, that were not caught by some of these, um, information, the city is putting out that information in, in a, in a very real way, in, in a way that you, you update your license and your sales tax and all of these things at the same time, and you're sent reminders, and um, so, so I just, I, I do want to reassure those of you who are not actively dealing with this, but, but that information is out there. Um, and that is not to certainly slight anyone who didn't know that. Um, however, I, I do wanna say that I think the city does a pretty good job of, of anytime you're touching the city regarding your business, they're asking you and saying, do you have a sales li- sales license? Or, um, so, or excuse me, a business license, um, so that's what I'd like to add, and again, I, I just wanna thank the, the committee for the daunting task that they have, so, thanks.
Thank you, I have, uh, Mr. Stites.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just had a quick question, um, Steve or Patrick, uh, can they get a, a business license online, or is that something that they have to come into the office for?
No, they can do it all online.
Oh, they can, okay.
Mail their check-in, yes.
Okay, at some point, they couldn't, is that new? To get a business license, you had to come in at some point?
Yeah, we've been going more electronic over the last several years.
Oh, okay, cuz, um, I, I spoke to our caller who called in earlier, um, Caitlin, I think, earlier today, and she said that you had to go in to actually do all that stuff, that, all that stuff can be done online now.
Correct.
Okay, how much, how much is that license?
Twenty dollars.
Annually?
Yes, and it, that's due on December thirty-first, and then we give you until April to pay, but you pay a penalty for every month after that that you don't pay. But the license does say on it that this license expires December thirty-first of whatever given year it is, so that knowledge that you paid it late, you paid a penalty on it, but your license was still expired on December thirty-first, and our program said you had to have a valid active license as of February first.
Thank you.
Thank you, um, additional discussion on this item. Ms. Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, I, back to the question about the additional funding, um. I am hopeful that we're able to provide additional funding, I know every business owner I've talked to in the last month, um, is, is looking to that at every level, municipal, county, federal. Um, but I feel like, you know, this is, you know, this wasn't really even a full agenda item on the study session today, so I think, you know, I, I hope that's an item we can pick up again after we know more about how COVID's impacted our own sales tax revenue and better understanding what the governor's revised or orders look like. So I hope we do pick that up, and again, time is of the essence. But I feel like what we've been working with was the mandate of the quarter million dollars that, that we felt confident we had and can put out there, and, and like Amanda said, I think what the committee's done on very short order is like absolutely phenomenal, so I appreciate that, and I know there's hard decisions to be made, but I wouldn't feel comfortable allocating significant amounts of money until I better understand where the city budget is, and, um, kinda understanding better what the forecast looks like for the next couple of months, so um, I, I wish that we had enough for everybody, and, um, I'm hopeful that the committee can find some sort of sliding scale to make sure at least more businesses get a little bit, but, um, whatever they do, I fully support them, I'm, I'm excited, we have so much talent in the committee, thank you.
Thank you, I have, uh, Ms. Hoppy, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I, you know, I want to also say thank you to that committee, and, um, uh, Councilmember Urban sits on that committee for us, and, and I appreciate all the, um, extra work that, um, he's putting in for that. Um, and the committee as a whole, I know they're lean, mean, they're moving fast, and, um, I really appreciate it. It sounds like we have enough consensus to, but I just wanna make it official to say that we would like to revisit this, um, for a potential second round, further on down, later down the road, when we have the financial information, um, to be able to make a decision, um, to make a more educated decision on it, so I would just like to see if there's a, an actual consensus that we can, you know, put that for later on down the road.
Okay, go ahead, spill that.
Hold on, I, I have a comment on that.
Mr. Urban.
I, I would prefer that we have a hard date set for that, cuz saying later on down the road doesn't really give any hope to business owners as a release to when we would be at least, you know, a, a study session date or some, um.
I would just like to give staff opportunity to get the information and be able to analyze it, so is there, uh, Mr. Goff, do you think there's a time coming up that you think would be enough time for you guys to review it?
Yeah, I was just, I was just pulling up the, uh, tentative agendas, you know, we, we probably won't have a good, um, true analysis of, of March, um, until about April tenth, is that about right, Ally? When's, when does March? I'm, I'm sorry, May, May, uh, is that about right, Ally, we're, we're trying to get it sooner?
Yeah, I'd say analysis by the fifteenth.
Fifteenth of May?
Yeah, with analysis, yeah.
But when, when will we have our sales tax numbers pretty?
Uh, the numbers will be in by the tenth, yeah.
But by the, by the tenth, okay, so looking at calendar, Janice, do you have the calendar up by chance?
I do.
I do.
Um, we have, we have a regular meeting on the eleventh, and we have a study session on May eighteenth, and then the following is holiday, but, and then the next, you know, study session would be June first.
So we could, we could probably have an initial discussion on May eleventh at that meeting. I could do something on her.
A regular meeting? Or would you like to move it to the, do it on the eighteenth to have the analysis?
Yeah, we, we would definitely have more information on the eighteenth, but if, if you wanted, we, we could have an initial information on the eleventh, if council wants to have an initial discussion, and we, we also just wanted to say this, we may have more information by then. There's, there's heavy lobbying going on, um, at the federal level to, um, get some flexibility on, in how the, the federal dollars can be spent. And at this point, we, we still don't believe that we could use any federal dollars that we get for, um, a program like this, but um, we may hear back in the next week or a couple of weeks that some of the federal dollars coming down might help us fund a program like this, so that would, that would provide some additional revenues, um, that we wouldn't have to use from the general fund, but we, we don't know yet, but the good news is, um, everybody is lobbying, um, the Treasury Department to um, make, make the use of those funds much more flexible at the local level.
I, I, I would, uh, ask us to look at this on the May eleventh, uh, meeting. And then to Patrick's point, if, uh, the federal government says that these dollars can be reimbursable, do we need a a consensus from council or any action on our part to say that we could re-up the two fifty we've already committed to this to be used again, if we, you know, if the federal government comes in and says we can get reimbursed for our initial two fifty? Or how would we go about it?
Sorry, Mr. Urban, yes, it, it would require a city, a council action, um, just to, uh, appropriate the funds, because we, it would be probably on a reimbursement, so we'd have to appropriate the funds in the budget, which requires council action by resolution.
Okay, um, uh, uh, Ms. Hoppy had a, had a consensus out there, would you like to reformulate that, or is everybody?
Sure, I guess I can just ask for, is, is there any disagreement to the looking at this again on May eleventh for a potential second round for our small business grant program?
That's, that's, that's harder to get consensus on, it's better.
I was saying, I felt like it was.
It's better we could have.
Do we have agreement to move to, to look at this on May eleventh for?
Thank you, we have consensus on that. Does that, does that conclude the discussion, uh, does that give us of the framework that we're, we're looking forward to, uh, to complete this item? Mr. Urban, uh, Steve, or, uh, Mr. Goff?
I'm so.
Okay, good.
Urban, you okay with the, uh, the, the first round on process? On awarding those, get all those questions answered?
Yeah, I believe that we do, okay.
Good. Ms. Mayor?
Yeah, yes, Mr. Eric.
If there are any businesses out there listening, and just let them know that hopefully we will have our decisions made tomorrow afternoon, and we'll be able to start making those phone calls and emails out to those businesses that are awarded on Wednesday.
Thank you for that information. Okay, that's all of the items that we have on our, uh, agenda, uh, I will go to elected officials' reports, and, um, uh, please raise your hand if you have a report to give this evening, uh, Ms. Hoppy and Mr. Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, I just wanna say that I was working with, um, Steve, our, our economic, uh, department, the, uh, some volunteers, a few volunteers for the Rotary, a few volunteers through the Wheat Ridge Business Association, volunteers through, uh, Local Works, and, um, myself being a small business owner, and, um, Chris, the owner at Bardot Coffee House, and, uh, what has come out of all of our collaboration and our effort is a thing called WheatRidgeGiftCards.com. So WheatRidgeGiftCards.com, okay, I love this, I always want to have, I always wanna be able to do that. Um, WheatRidgeGiftCards.com, collaborative effort to continue emergency relief support for small businesses in the community. Buy a gift card now to use later can help keep small businesses afloat during the COVID-nineteen pandemic and shutdowns. In order for our community to come out of this strong and intact, we have to help our local small businesses survive. Check out Wheat Ridge, oh, sorry, it's not Wheat Ridge, WRGiftCards, sorry, WRGiftCards.com, and find your favorite businesses to support, uh, you'll be redirected to their website to purchase the gift card, um, directly from that business, Local Works is offered to, um, help, um, any businesses who don't offer, um, online gift cards, they will print them for you, and so then you can, um, figure out how to collect the money and then mail that to them if you would like to, if you don't have online capacity. And the City of Wheat Ridge is backing up the program by guaranteeing gift card purchases for up to a hundred dollars. So if you're a small business in Wheat Ridge, please visit the website, there's a form that you can fill out to get you linked in to the WR, um, GiftCards.com. Also, if you're a small business in Wheat Ridge, please check out Biz-Ridge.com, because there are, while you may be listed in there, you're only listed there if you have a business license with the city, and so it doesn't necessarily have all your information, like your email or your website or what you do, so please go and update your listing into, um, that, and that's all I have.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Stites.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I had a quick question, I got an email, and I think, I think we all did, um, from a constituent this week, um, asking about Wheat Ridge Speaks and the comments that are on there, um. There, and, and I see Ally's on here, so that might be good. On Wheat Ridge Speaks, there's a little number at the bottom, it says like seven of nine of the elected officials have looked at the, the comments on there, um, is that accurate?
Yeah, from what I understand, and Lauren Mikulak is the, is the expert on this, but, um, yes, that lets the public know, and, and you all know who, who has reviewed, how many of you have reviewed those comments?
Thank you, um, my, my issue, I guess, and my question is, looking at the one for today, only seven of nine have reviewed the comments that are on there, and last week, I can't quite remember what the exact number was, it was like six of nine or something like that, um, if these are legal public comments, if the, um, or if, or if they're gonna be used as testimony in a public hearing, I would highly encourage all of us to actually go and make sure that we look at and review those, um. Is there a way maybe to post the council members or the elected officials who have actually looked at those rather than just a number? I mean, I don't wanna get anybody in trouble, I just, it should, I, I feel like there should be some accountability to make sure that if that is a viable option for people to give comment, that people are actually looking at it.
Um, I don't believe that that is possible, at least for public view, um, although we can certainly follow up. Um, again, Lauren is our expert and in touch with the software developer on this. Um, but I think, um, from what I understand, no, and the reason being, um, it, the idea is to simulate as much as the, as the in-person process as possible, and so while, sure, you, you might all be sitting there, um, present, you may not be listening. You may not be listening to a presentation in front of you, um, and, and really the same is true here, you could be zoning out, you could be looking, I'm sure none of you ever do, but you know, if you were looking at something else on your surface, for example, you may not be paying full attention. And so the idea here, and, and, and the public doesn't know that either. So my understanding is that the goal of this is to try and simulate the in-person process as much.
of this is to try and simulate the in-person process as much as possible.
Okay. Well, I would just say if if we're going to continue moving forward, this is a tool, and I think it's a tremendous tool. I would just encourage all of us to actually look at it and and take those opinions into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional elected officials' reports. Ms. Dozeman?
Hi. So one of the benefits of being at home is that my dogs get a lot more loving. So Aces joined us. But I just wanted to say that a memo went out today at Lutheran saying that they're no longer taking donations from the community, that they are very grateful for what they have received. But they are going to be removing their donation boxes. And so I just wanted to get the word out to the public. So they are very grateful. The community has really shown up in force, whether it was donating PPE or, you know, making cards or bringing food for the healthcare professionals. I mean, it has been tremendous. And so Lutheran is very grateful. And I I know that I have just been really excited and and grateful to see everything that's come out of this. So I just wanted to get that out there. And thank you all.
Thank you. Additional public officials' reports before we wrap up for the evening. Ms. Holtein and then Ms. Hutchinson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, for the long conversation we had regarding mandating masks in essential businesses, I just, my comments that I wanted to make before we even had that is I have been so impressed with how quickly our community has started wearing masks. I think Councilwoman Hutchison kind of referenced it's a little bit out of a sci-fi movie, but I was very impressed. The couple of times I had to go to the store or Walgreens this week, really, there was almost no exceptions. People were wearing masks and being really respectful of personal spaces. So I feel like, you know, the mandate that we talked about is dealing with a small percentage of our community. But I want to just recognize, you know, the communication of our city, our county, our state, and the engagement of our community to show that they care by, you know, wearing masks and and respecting personal space. So I think we we talk a lot about the outliers, but I just really want to acknowledge that our citizens and our leaders have, I think, really stepped up. So I'm I'm impressed. And I I know we're only going to get better. So, thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Hutchinson?
Thank you, Mayor. I have one clock going that I didn't stop, sorry. But I don't know if this is the platform or not, but I wanted to ask other council people, I had been contacted by a constituent about an issue that he's concerned about. And I just wanted to ask the other council if maybe they've heard about this. Is this okay to do this now or no?
Yes, I think if we.
Okay.
Kind of leave leave names out, but go ahead with the issue.
So I was contacted by this constituent with concerns regarding fire pits and them being used during this COVID virus and especially like if there's wind and there is a time at night that maybe when they should be shut down due to the smell. Environmental Health Department in Jefferson County does not handle fire pits. They do in Denver. Denver does not allow solid wood waste, but it seems to be okay like in Wheat Ridge, according to the fire department. And this person just had concerns like if there's a wind and it's blowing with this virus that's in the air. Has anybody else had any issues with that type of issue?
Goff, have you, have you had any any conversations around this issue?
What was that to me, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I just looking to generate a conversation around fire pits.
I I this came up, I've heard this come up once. I can't remember who brought it up. And and I did hear also, as as Ms. Hutchinson said, the Fire District does not regulate local fire pits. That would have to be up to us if we wanted to restrict those. The county does have a countywide fire restriction, I believe, but that does not include fire pits. So I haven't, I haven't heard anything more than that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, some additional elected officials' reports. Mr. Mayor, this is your city clerk speaking. Oh, thank you. I I was wondering where you'd gone. So have I. Maybe you're back. Decided I was, I I didn't need to speak, I guess. I just wanted to make one comment for the public very quickly for those other members of our cycling community. I have heard at least a half a dozen different citizen reports, complaints, I'll say, about fast running bicycles on the rain belt paved pathways where there are also pedestrians. Many of the cyclists are complying with the speed limit and riding safely. A handful are not. And on behalf of those who can't hear as well or can't move as fast, I would implore the cycling community to please slow down when there are others present. Other than that, thank you all for your hard work and please be safe. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Additional officials, public officials' reports. Mr. Urban?
Hey, Mr. Mayor. I was approached by a local business in Wheat Ridge that does medical testing and they they have suggested that their business has the capacity or has the capabilities to do COVID nineteen testing. And so I've been communicating with them and trying to figure out what their capacity might be. And depending on how the state and the feds roll out this testing, there may come a time in the next few weeks that we as a city need to understand what our role in that testing process would be and and how we can help facilitate that. And I was comforted to know that we have a business here in Wheat Ridge that has that capacity. And I'll be continuing to try to work with them to see how we can help them or or if we can help them at all. But knowing that they they have that capacity is very heartening, I guess. So I just want to bring your all all of your attention to that. And that in the next few weeks, you may need to look at how the city Wheat Ridge can facilitate mass testing in in some way, shape or form.
Thank you very much for that information and great to have that resource in our community. Additional public officials' reports before we wrap up for the evening. All right. Well, it looks like we've we've done all, we've exhausted the the discussion we're going to have tonight. I would like to thank you all councillors and staff and particularly the public for joining us tonight. And thank Mr. Mr. Gibson with Excel Energy for for giving us a report and for the Sustainable Wheat Ridge, for Amy and Joy and and Kayla and Mary Ann Schilling for putting together the Wheat Ridge Sustainable Wheat Ridge Report. I'm I'm, I'm like most of you, I was at the grocery store sort of once this week and and I put on my mask and and sort of everybody else had masks on and were one way in the aisles. There was there was good social distancing and I see people walking and staying staying apart from one another, but enjoying the the beautiful weather that we have and and trying to keep keep us all together while we're going through this emergency. It's it's tough, but we will get through it together. And I want to thank you all for for really coming together as a community because we've really had a I'm I'm amazed at at the city of Wheat Ridge and how we've how we've adapted to this new world. So if there's no more business to come before us, we will stand adjourned. We will have a meeting next week. And I hope everyone has a very safe safe week going forward and stay healthy. So thank you all very much. Good night.